All right. All right, good evening, everybody. City of Clear Lake Shores, City Council, ready our meeting May 16th, 2023 at 6:30. Welcome, everybody. Item number one is called order. We have a full quorum here of council members and visitors. Welcome. Item number two is the pledge that leads us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Texas flag. All right, got reports from council. Item number three, Councilman Steve Wirtis.
I have nothing to report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wirtis. Councilman Rick Fisher.
Nothing to report, but I just want to say to Monica, Steve and Kurt, thank you very much for the time you guys put in with the council and with the city. I'm sure everybody appreciates your efforts, and we sure do. I know it's not an easy job, and the salary's kind of lousy.
Yeah, I mean, it can be a salary.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Fisher. All right, Councilman Monica Leday.
So I don't have anything to report, but I would like to say thank you to the city for entrusting me to represent you guys through the last two years. It has been a joy, for the most part. And then, I kind of want to make a recommendation to you guys on new business. I don't know where our new council members sit as far as knowing committees and stuff, but I know that for me, on my first meeting, whenever I was asked, you know, hey, what committees do you want to do, or will you do these committees or volunteer, I had no idea what they were about. So I know it's on the agenda. I just think maybe you guys might want to consider tabling it and letting, you know, giving everybody two weeks to look at what the committees are and what they do and what they're entailed, and maybe get a little bit better buy-in on who should do what committee and be what liaison. Just a bit of advice.
Thank you, Ms. Leday, and Councilman Alex Scanlon.
I'd like to echo Rick's sentiments that it's been a pleasure serving with you three for three and a half or whatever oddball number of years it's been after the whole COVID election in November, but there's been some trials and tribulations, and appreciate the effort you've put in, and I've learned from you, and I appreciate that, and hopefully we see around enjoying life on the island.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon, and Councilman Mayor Pro Tem Randy Cronister.
I'll just say ditto all those same comments. Shorten it up.
Ditto.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cronister, and I have no comment at this time. I'll comment later. Staff reports, item four, Chief David Donelson.
No report, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Chief, and City Administrator Brad Gowdy.
Mayor, thank you. I know this is a special evening, so I'll make it extra special and keep my report short this evening. The first thing I'd like to mention on Shell Bottom Boat Ramp Project, that lease has been received, reviewed by legal, signed and returned, so we're good there. Where we're at right now is Fish and Wildlife Services. We're waiting for a report back from them if they're going to require an environmental assessment before moving this project on. So at least we are making a step forward, probably not as fast as everybody'd like it to, but it is forward movement. We did meet with the Economic Development Committee last week. Couple of things is we're looking at reviving things on the parking lot plans. We did receive updates for concrete finish, but out of due diligence, we are going back and ensuring that we have comparable asphalt finish agreements, so we make sure we're looking at this and doing the best thing with the tax dollars as possible. Also, recently, EDC approved funding for new irrigation drip system on the new palm trees that were submitted. Arborists have advised that a continuous spray from what's there could lead to rot and shorten the lifespan of those trees, so everything is being converted over, so we're protecting our investment. I'd like to thank Angie for her time last week. For those that may not realize it, STRs are substantial demand on our permits department. We have been visiting and consulting with a contractor that provides a service to actually monitor those sites and look at those doing business in STRs within the community, ensuring that they are permitted and that we are collecting the appropriate fees and they are adhering to our rules. Gulf Coast Aquatics brought that contract forward last meeting. We did have some issues where there's some references to the... Yeah, association. So there was references to association. We did get that changed. Everything was changed over where it referenced association. It's now city that has gone to legal and was approved, and we're bringing that back forward. One thing I did want to address, Mayor brought up the question in regards to swim lessons. I did get verified that those are paid directly to Gulf Coast Aquatics. However, back in COVID, those programs fizzled off, and currently there is no private lessons going on. Should that get revived, that's the way it will be handled. Finally, I had the fortunate to attend last week TML Small Town Conference in Bastrop. I will say it was a very good and kind of rest everybody sure that we're not having unique problems. All small towns are sharing many of the same issues that we are, and did make some good contacts, and I felt it was very beneficial. So thank you for the opportunity to get there. I'd just like to close. Thank you to the three of you for the short time I got to work with you. I know I missed out on some great opportunities over the years, but I do thank you for what you've done for me.
Hey, a side note on the STRs. I had provided, and I'll send it to you, assuming I still have access to my email, if not Randy can, a program that does exactly what you're talking to the building for you to compare costs.
I believe the one you referred to is the one we're visiting with because we took that reference in contact that reached out to them.
Okay.
We had a meeting explaining our capabilities, and next week we actually go through a demo.
Okay, yeah, the demo is really good.
Yes, thank you for that.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gowdy. Number five at this time, public comments. At this time, any person with city-related business may speak to the city council. If the topic of discussion is related to an item on the agenda, the comment may be made now or at the time the agenda is discussed. If the topic of discussion is not related to an item on the agenda, the city council cannot deliberate or take any action at this time. Comments from public should be limited to a maximum of three minutes per individual. And Christie, you're really giving me a challenge here. Some words changed. Anybody like to address council? All right. All right, having none, we'll move to item number six, consent and agenda. We have items A, B and C. Does any item need to be pulled by council? Having none, any objection to accepting the consent agenda? Having none, the consent agenda is accepted as written, A through C. Item number seven is old business discussion. Possible action may be taken on the following items. Item A is 2023-2024 Gulf Coast Aquatics Incorporated Pool Management Contract. Mr. Gowdy has spoken on that. Any further discussion?
I'll make a motion then that we accept the Gulf Coast Aquatics Inc. contract as revised.
I second.
Motion by Mr. Fisher, second by Ms. Leday. Any discussion? Having none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item eight, new business discussion. Possible action may be taken on the following items. Item A is Resolution 2023-10, a resolution of City of Clear Lake Shores, Texas, canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the general election held on May 6, 2023, for the purpose of electing one mayor and two council members in a special election adoption of the state law applicable to police officers that establishes collective bargaining and majority of the affected employees' association, and preserves the prohibition against strikes and lockouts, and provides penalties for strikes and lockouts. And we believe all the information's out about that. Just need a motion and a second.
I make a motion to accept Resolution 2023-10 as written.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Leday, second by Mr. Cronister. Any discussion? Having none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Having none, motion passes. Item B is presentation of silver dollars to the council members and the mayor. So I'll start off. First one is Ms. Monica Leday for your service. Thank you. Can I get this right?
Thanks, sir.
Don't spend it all in one place. Next is Mr. Steve Wirtis.
May I say something at this time?
Uh, yes.
I was trying to follow the proper protocol. I wasn't sure whether to say something during the initial meeting or now. I basically wanted to thank everyone for the opportunity to serve Clear Lake Shores. I now have a greater appreciation for what goes on in the workings of the city, the intricacies, the day-to-day business and that. I'd also like to encourage every citizen to serve in some capacity, no matter how small you might think it is. It's every contribution helps, and I believe that the city's in good hands with the current representation, and look forward to seeing y'all around the island. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wirtis. Next is Mr. Alex Scanlon. Next is Mr. Rick Fisher. And next is our Mayor Pro Tem, Mr. Randy Cronister. Oh, I guess you need a silver dollar, huh?
Yeah. This is for you, Kurt? You give them that back to me?
Thank you. I don't know, Monica, if you had anything to...
We have a little something else for you.
Okay.
On behalf of the city council, we'd like to present you with this for your service to the city of Clear Lake Shores.
Well, I appreciate it, man. Thank you. It's a little different from this one. That one, I think it came from that tech board thing where you hit the flags down. Thank you, I appreciate it.
You can actually uncrew it if you want to.
Well, bear with me. I did want to just say a few words, and hopefully it won't take too long, but I won't run it till 12 o'clock. We've had a few of those. First, I just want to say thanks to my lovely wife Teresa for always being there for me and my entire family for allowing me to do this, although it's quite taxing on all of you, so thank you for your support over the years. And it's a lot, and really says a lot for everybody out there to get up here and volunteer, and I encourage everybody to do like what Steve was saying. I also want to say thanks to all of our friends and church friends who have been there as well. It's been quite a ride for five years. Overall, I've enjoyed it, and frankly, I feel we have all accomplished many things over the last five years. I first started as a council member, and when Mike didn't want to run as mayor again, and Amanda didn't want to do it, I said, well, I guess I better step in. And then here we are, four years later. And I know we're busy tonight, but I just wanted to review a few things, and it's all of us, the whole community does this, and it's not... I just wanted to just go over what we've accomplished over the years, and I think it's pretty important. Some of the major ones. First off, we went through a COVID pandemic during this whole time. You know, that took two years. I think we had 19 Zoom meetings. We wrote nine emergency declarations for the city, so that's a lot of stuff to go through, and it was really taxing on the community. And on top of that, the EDC helped us tremendously by putting a thing in place for retention of our businesses and gave up the $20,000 with no payback requirement to our business to help float them through this time, so I think that's huge. We procured the ROW for Daniel Dorr Road, and it's finally open, but yeah, we do need a stoplight at the end of that, but when they did the assessment on it, they didn't have that all in place yet, and COVID was going on. We procured the property behind City Hall, so that can be future investment or to extend City Hall or build City Hall somewhere else. We also did recodification of all the city ordinances, which was a big, major task. We started the annual Christmas tree lighting, and has everybody come up with that, and the civic club helps us put that on, but that is a city event. Small things like pool resurfacing, I mean, there's a lot of funds that we've spent getting things done, the sundial low brown fishing pier replacement. I started off my first task as council member is writing the mobile food unit ordinance with Angie Terrell, so that was a huge thing, and now we've got that all cleaned up. Short-term rentals, Monica Leday did a big portion of that. Entire committee, thank you for putting that all together. We had the 60th city anniversary celebrations and a very highly successful gala. We also had sinking boats across the way. Do you remember those? Three sinking boats, and we were able to get rid of that. You know, the clubhouse painting, all the stuff in here that you look around, the lights, the fans are all gone. We've got video displays. We record the meetings now and put those out there for everybody to see, so there's a lot of transparency that was put out there for everybody to see. Kudos to Odie and Jorge. They, big round of applause for them. They do so much for this city, and they're always so helpful, and with everybody, and you just ask them, and they've done a lot. If you look at a public works area, that whole thing's been painted. We've gotten rid of a lot of equipment, you know, personal watercraft, bikes, a Humvee that we weren't using, a street sweeper, we use that all the time, a street roller, a tractor, and then all the funds we raised from auctioning off the PD vehicles instead of just getting rid of them, really assisted in us procuring the five new police cars that we have. We put new body cameras on the police force with 5G internet service for the cameras. We also rolled out new configuration control for all of our data management and got fillable forms, so kudos to Christie and the whole gang in City Hall. We've gotten flash reports and that stuff out there. But some things I just want to leave for council to ponder in the future that I didn't get to that I think that would be really good for the community is future projects is to replace the parks equipment for the kids. The community is really growing for the kids, or has been growing with more kids, and we really could use new park equipment. Another thing is ADA compliance with our parks. That's really what we owe. Some of those have been redone. We've got to get those up to code, and I think that's a really big thing. And then last, just to, again, thank all the volunteers for the city, what you do day in and day out. I think Christie and City Secretary and Cheryl Hunter, Finance Director, have been instrumental to my growth in the city, and just like before, there was mayors before me, and there'll be mayors after me, so I'm sure we're all in good hands with our next team that we have. And lastly, I'd just leave you with Ephesians 3:20. Now to him who is able to do immeasurably more than all we ask or imagine according to his power, that is at work within us. Ephesians 3:20. Thank you for all your support. All right, next is item C, Statement of Office and Oath of Office for the Election. 2023 mayor-elect Randy Cronister, newly appointed council members Ed Waters and Jeff Terrell, given by Judge Kathleen McCumber, who is from Galveston County, and she is from the Justice of the Peace Precinct, number four. And I know from previous times, we never knew when we'd step down, and this is the time we get to step down, so here we go. Thank you all, I appreciate everything. Thank you all, I appreciate everything.
All right, thank you all for coming. Let's finish this meeting up and have a little cake. Be sure you all stay around for some cake and drinks afterwards. We're moving on to number eight, new business. Item number D, appointment of Roads and Drainage Liaison. I'm currently the Roads and Drainage Liaison. Richard and Alex have kind of asked me to stay around and do that, so I'll be honest with you, I'd like to stay on that if you guys see fit. We have any motions for anything?
A motion to appoint Mayor Randy Cronister to be the Roads and Drainage Liaison.
I'll second it.
Got a motion by Alex Scanlon, second by Rick Fisher. Any discussion? All in favor? Item B, appointment of Planning and Zoning Liaison, currently is Monica LaDai. Anybody have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to table item E until the next meeting until we can get a full council and do a review on who might like to be on that committee.
Okay, we got a second? You're on.
I'll second it.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes to you now. Item F, waterfront compliance liaison.
I want to, I think Alex was looking to get off that, so I'd like to make a motion to table, I'm sorry, item F to the next meeting on June 6.
I can second that.
Got a motion by Rick Fisher, got a second by Alex Scanlon. Any discussion on that?
I'm not necessarily looking to get off the committee, but it's, I don't really have a passion for that one, so if somebody else is interested in it, you know, think about it, by all means, I am not attached to it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item H, appointment of representative to alternate. Oh, I'm sorry. Item G, appointment of Parks and Pool Committee Liaison, currently is Rick Fisher.
Perfectly willing to stay on it.
Motion to, are we reappointing, reappoint or reappoint Rick Fisher to the Parks and Pools Committee Liaison position?
Second it.
Got a motion by Alex Scanlon, got a second by Jeff Terrell. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Item H, appointment of a representative and alternative to HGAC. Current representative is Monica and the alternate is Alex Scanlon.
I'd like to make a motion to table item H until the June 6 meeting.
Have a motion by Rick, do we have a second?
I second it.
Got a motion by Rick Fisher, got a second by Ed Waters. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Item I, appointment of two directors to the Emergency Services Board, which is the ESB. Current directors were Kurt Otten, who's resigned, and myself. There again, just so you know, I'd like to stay on that committee.
I tell you what, let's, I'd like to make a motion to table item I until the June 6 meeting. So we can, I'd like to keep Randy on there too, but we can come up with a second person to do it.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Rick Fisher, got a second by Jeff Terrell. Any discussion?
So are we appointing Randy and not defining the alternate? Is that the motion?
I think he said table it.
Just table it till June 6.
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor? Leads us to item J, I'm used to turning my microphone off after I speak. Resolution 2023-11, a resolution of the City Council of Clear Lake Shores establishing the approved list of persons authorized to sign checks on behalf of the city of Clear Lake Shores. That's essentially just removing Kurt and adding me to that check signing list.
All motion to approve resolution 2023-11 regarding authorization to sign checks.
I second that.
Have a motion by Alex Scanlon, have a second by Ed Waters. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item K, resolution 2023-12, a resolution of the city of Clear Lake Shore supporting a no-wake zone in and around Clear Lake on June 23, 2023 during the Texas Outlaw Challenge. That's a resolution that we do every year to keep the no-wake zone in effect while these guys are doing what they're needing to do out there in the water.
I'm making motion to approve resolution 2023-12 for the no-wake zone on June 23.
I'll second it.
Got a motion by Rick Fisher, got a second by Jeff Terrell. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion pass. Last but not least, item L, approved to adjust the summer month city council meetings to one meeting a month to occur on the first Tuesday of the month, starting in June, July, and August of 2023. We've done this the past couple of years I've been on council. Alex kind of pushed back a little bit, I just had to say that. You guys are interested in doing that, we can make a motion and do that. If there's something else you want to do, let me know.
I'll make a motion to discuss, is that possible? I don't know, there was some discussion, we had to have it on the agenda to discuss or not in the recent past, so.
Have a motion to discuss, do we have a second?
I'll second.
So Randy said I pushed back in the past and I did and that's because I didn't feel like we could be very effective as a council, only meeting once a month. I didn't, I didn't like it. Now in the summer, we do the budget and hopefully we'll have several budget meetings this year and we can, you know, really get that hammered out well. You guys are new to council, so I'm actually feeling comfortable going to one. But that's something that you're fresh on council, you know, one meeting a month, that means there's going to be three meetings between now and, you know, August. That's really not a lot other than some workshops, so really I would encourage one of you guys to make a motion or give your input on that with Rick. Because I could go either way, it doesn't, I don't think it's going to affect us negatively, but I also am happy to come to more meetings over the summer if you feel it's needed.
Can we do the once a month and as needed call a special?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, we can always, if something comes up, we can always call a special meeting, it just has to be posted for 72 hours.
Correct.
For the forum. Yeah, I think too, like with, you know, the budget coming up and everything else, we can always do some workshops. You know, we could even, I would even encourage maybe doing a workshop, just getting all the new council members together just to go over meeting protocols, you know, kind of review Robert's little order and just how we do things up here, just get everybody a little bit more comfortable with it. Because I'm like you, the first time we got sworn in too, we were up here just deer in the headlights, no idea what to do.
Yeah, we were on Zoom meetings. That was a wild time.
Yeah, so just to add some input, I've talked to Brad about this already, about doing a couple of those workshops and getting all you guys together and kind of going through how we're going to do it, how we're going to make motions and what to expect in the meetings. We have talked about that.
Yeah, I'm fine with the one meeting a month, as long as, like I was saying, if something does come up, we can always call a special meeting. If we have some workshops to get some guidance on how the, you know, the meetings actually run, that would be fine with me.
Well, then I'll make a motion to adjust the summer month council meetings to one meeting a month for June, July, and August of 2023.
I'll second it.
Got a motion by Alex Scanlon, got a second by Jeff Terrell. Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Well, they're gone already, but I was going to tell Kima, this is how you have a meeting and it only lasts 50 minutes. You know, we're good.